Tess, we'd like to remind anyone that's in the audience, if you would like to make a comment on any of the action items that's on the agenda this evening. There are cards in the basket over here to the left of the board's desk, and there are yellow cards and there's pencils provided. So you would just fill out the card and you would give them to Ms. Sharon over there. Okay, and at this time, we'd like to call the meeting to order, and we'll begin with swearing in an oath of office for Mr. Glenn Quibbido, board member for District Two.
How y'all feeling?
Good.
All right, do you read your right hand?
Aye, state your name.
Aye, Glenn Quibbido.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution and laws
And I will support the Constitution and laws
of the United States
Of the United States.
and the Constitution and laws of this state
and the Constitution and laws of this state.
and that I will faithfully and impartially
and I will faithfully and impartially
discharge and perform
discharge and perform
all duties incumbent upon me
all duties incumbent
as member of school board District Two
as a member of school board
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my ability
and understanding
and understanding.
so help me God.
so help me God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, gentlemen.
So at this time, we will have roll call, please.
James Higginbottom?
Here.
Glenn Quibbido?
Here.
Dilo Abear?
Here.
Steve Jones?
Here.
Ike Reschard?
Here.
James Higginbottom?
Here.
Milton Seymour?
Here.
Becky Atkins?
Here. We're going to ask that everyone please stand for our prayer, which will be led by our new board member, Glenn Quibbido, and the Pledge of Allegiance will follow, being led by board member James Higginbottom.
Dear God, we gather here this evening, first remembering to thank you for all the blessings you bestowed upon us as Americans, from the gift of life to being lucky enough to be born in the United States and Louisiana, living in Acadia and enjoying all the freedoms, liberties, and privileges that we do. We thank you, dear God, for allowing us to gather here at this meeting to discuss and protect the rights and well-being of our children, parents, teachers, and staff. We ask that you grant us clarity and guidance in making the decisions we ultimately will, all in the best interest of those we serve. And finally, dear God, we ask that you see us all home safely, protect us and our families in today's turbulent and changing times. We ask this, all of these things, in your name, amen.
Amen.
To the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have one more opening item, and it's recognition of appreciation to Ochsner Acadia General Hospital. And we're going to ask Caroline Marso to please come forward, and we're going to, she will speak. Caroline is a member of the Acadia Healthy Alliance, and they did a very special product for, project for our middle school campuses, so she's going to tell you about that.
So, Ochsner Acadia General, first of all, my name's Caroline Marso. I serve as the executive leader for Ochsner Acadia General Hospital. I've been working there for 23 years proudly. We participate in the Healthy Alliance. It really aligns with our hospital's mission, vision, and values. And the Healthy Alliance's mission is to raise, to first, improve the community's health ranking, and then to increase the community's awareness, knowledge, and capacity to improve health outcomes. So our vision and mission is to improve, heal, lead, and educate. So thank you for what you do, because you're helping to educate our community. We were in one of our meetings in the springtime, and our value that we were highlighting for the quarter was compassion. So when talking with the team, the Healthy Alliance team, we were talking about what the students needed. And it really hit my heart when Ms. Becky was saying that they need belts, they need deodorant, sometimes they need combs, brushes, they need toothpaste. And whenever a family is prioritizing what they're going to spend money on, sometimes those things are hard to come by. So we did a fresh and clean school drive our employees gave throughout the summer months, and it was really a great connection to our value of compassion, and we were very happy to do it. We hope that we can partner with you guys to do many more things like this, to be out in the community, helping to serve with you all as well. So thank you for giving us that opportunity.
Thank you, and I have to tell you that I did deliver. So these, all these items were split up amongst the four standalone middle school campuses, which is Crowley Middle, Armstrong, Church Point Middle, and Iota Middle. So I was able to get those things out to Church Point, I mean Crowley and Armstrong, and they were so appreciative, the counselors were so excited, and it got them thinking about something that they're doing on their campus. They have what they call house, you know, Carol, they have a house team, and it's students who are leaders on their campus. And, what's that?
Lighthouse.
Lighthouse, they're lighthouse leaders on their campus. And so they're, we're thinking about doing something compassionate for their, you know, do, have their kids do something for them, but they're so excited. And we have boxes that are going to go to Iota Middle and Church Point Middle, and Mr. Milton Seymour and Mr. Higginbottom are going to help deliver those.
So this afternoon, I opened a thank you note from one of the principals at Armstrong, and it's really a good connection to our values. I can't wait to read it to the team and our safety huddle in connection in the morning. So thank you, guys.
You, thank you, it's a good thing. Thank you. All right, we can give her a clap. Moving on to our action items. 2.1 is to approve the minutes of the August 8, 2023 regular session meeting and the minutes of the special session and the Budget and Finance Committee and Personnel, Insurance, and Curriculum Committee meetings dated August 22, 2023. Do I have a motion?
Regular session, Budget Finance Committee, and Personnel, Insurance, Curriculum Committee, meeting dated August 22, 2023.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Higginbottom and seconded by Mrs. David. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, please say nay. Motion carries. Item 2.2, consider approval of the following bids received. E023 Rain High Woodworking Shop, E024 Reschard Elementary Pavilion and Restroom Building, E025 Crowley Middle School Interior Gym Renovation, E026 Church Point High School Weight Room Edition, and E027 Crowley Kindergarten New Pavilion Building. Do I have a motion? It's been moved by Mr. Abear and seconded by Mr. Higginbottom. Is there any discussion on this action item? Motion? Or questions?
I thank you, Madam President. I can quickly go through the bids that were received. Rain High School, the winning bid was LNL Erectors out of Elton, or Kinder, if I'm not mistaken, at 196,000. Reschard Elementary, Glenn Frugé was the winning bidder at 492,000. Crowley Middle's renovations is LK Bro at 368,000. Church Point High Patriot was the winning bid at 420,000. And Crowley K was Glenn Frugé, right at 120,000. Altogether, this, these approvals tonight total about $1.6 million from COVID relief dollars, and we're happy to keep moving forward with going through the process, asking for your approval tonight. Reschard was 492,000, yes, sir. Glenn Frugé.
And we have plenty of money in each account?
Yes, sir, at this time, we do.
Any further discussion? Is there any questions or comments from the audience? So all in favor of approval of the following bids for Rain High School Woodworking Shop, Reschard Elementary Pavilion and Restroom Building, Crowley Middle School Interior Gym, Church Point High School Weight Room Edition, and Crowley Kindergarten New Pavilion Building, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, please say no. Motion carries. Item 2.3, consider approval of child nutrition bid number 30, 326 SL for frozen chilled meats. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the child nutrition bid number 326 SL for frozen chilled meats.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Abear and seconded by Mr. Jones. And is there any discussion? Would you like to explain, Mr. Reschard?
Madam President, members of the board, members of the audience, it's, you have in your packets about 32 items that were formally bid out to supply anything from canned, frozen fruits, vegetables, condiments, and staple items such as meat items for this school year's meal program. All of these funds come out of the Child Nutrition USDA funding source. Altogether, you're looking at about $1 million in food items for this school year, and we're asking for your approval tonight.
Any questions or comments? Any from the audience? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Item 2.4, consider approval of Central Rain Kindergarten New Restroom Building Project Change Order dated August 18, 2023.
I saw a move.
It's been moved by Mr. Jones and seconded by Mr. Abear.
Mr. Quibbido.
What?
What does matter? I said.
Oh, you did it?
No.
Sorry. Mr. Quibbido. Is there any discussion?
Yes, ma'am, this is a pretty small change order. Because of the federal funding source, we have to bring these change orders to the board and time back to the vendor that received the formal bid approval. Garden City Construction would like to redo some of the sidewalk area near the restroom facility that's being built at Central Rain K. This change order is in the amount of $1,356, and we're asking for your approval tonight.
Any other questions or comments? Any comments from the audience? All in favor of approving the change order for Central Rain Kindergarten New Restroom Building, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, please say nay. Motion carries. Consider approval of the Audit Compliance Questionnaire for the year ending June 30, 2023.
Make a motion to approve the Audit Compliance Questionnaire for the year ending June 30, 2023.
It's been moved by Mr. Abear and seconded by Mr. Reschard. Is there any discussion? Mr. Reschard, would you like to explain?
Yes, ma'am, this is a routine annual item as the board authorizes the auditing process by Colder Slaven. This Audit Compliance Questionnaire goes along with the audit process, and is required by the legislative auditor to keep us in compliance with the Local Government Budgeting Act. The board has to be presented with the document, which is basically a survey of compliance issues relative to fraud and following the laws and policies of the state of Louisiana and the school board, and we're asking for your approval tonight.
Any questions or comments? Any questions or comments from the audience? All in favor of approval of the Audit Compliance Questionnaire for the year ending June 30, 2023, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, please say nay. Motion carries. Item 2.6, consider approval to adopt the Louisiana Compliance Questionnaire Resolution by roll call vote.
Motion to adopt the Louisiana Compliance Questionnaire Resolution by roll call vote.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Abear and seconded by Mrs. David. Do we need to have a discussion?
This is the second piece of the actual questionnaire. The board is required to take a formal roll call vote, authorizing the submission and the completion of the compliance questionnaire, and we're asking for you all to approve tonight.
Is there any questions or comments? Any from the audience? Roll call vote, please.
James Higginbottom?
Yes.
Glenn Quibbido?
Yes.
Dilo Abear?
Yes.
Steve Jones?
Yes.
Ike Reschard?
Yes.
James Higginbottom?
Yes.
Milton Seymour?
Yes.
Becky Atkins?
Yes.
Aye, nay? Some nay?
Moving on to item 2.7. Consider approval of the 2023-2024 Pupil Progression Plan. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to consider approval of 2023-2024 Pupil Progression Plan.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Abear and seconded by Mr. Jones. Do we have any discussion?
Yes, ma'am, Madam President, members of the board, you should have received a copy of the proposed changes to our pupil progression plan. This is an annual item that BESI requires, the State Board of Elementary and Secondary Education requires all local school boards to approve, review, and approve. It's a template provided by the Department of Education to all local school systems. It aligns us to the state rules and state laws and BESI policies and covers just about everything from A to Z as it relates to how student moves from one grade level to the next. The bulk of the changes this year are focused around literacy. We've talked a lot about literacy in our board meetings and committee meetings, literacy support for students, especially in the early grades. The other changes are focused on transitional ninth grade for students that are struggling moving and meeting the LEAP requirements but are allowed to go to high schools in what's called a T9 status while they work to pass the eighth grade LEAP, any of the ELA or math. And I think the other main component of the revisions deals with NCAA rules for virtual learning and attendance for virtual learning for students that are in our virtual program. Be glad to answer any questions, and if I can't answer them, I'm pretty sure our staff can help.
Do you have, Mr. Seymour?
What is promotion, what is regent say? I'm looking at third grade. What, and I'm looking, if a student has not met the grade, the level, performance, they may or may not be retained.
Yes, sir, we.
Now, look further down. You may have in your plan, you could add to this. Nothing, nothing is concrete. When is a kid cannot be promoted? The same decision makes.
Normally, routinely, the school building level committee makes that decision based on a number of factors at the school level. As far as LEAP scores, now we have to consider literacy scores and whether or not report card grades are part of the decision, whether or not the student is meeting the standards as prescribed by the state of Louisiana for third grade students to matriculate or pass to fourth grade. There's a lot of discretion in the pupil progression plan because it needs to be a local decision at the school level to decide whether or not the student is ready to move on from third grade to fourth grade.
Where do the teachers have in that?
Teachers should have a great deal of weight.
They're a part of the SBLC.
They're a part of the school building level committee.
They're a member of the SBLC.
I know they're a part of it, but I was just wondering, you know, if the SBLC can go against the teacher's decision. I guess it's possible, but y'all can't. It's up to the committee.
I mean, the same as a parent may disagree with an SBLC decision, but it's.
You know, we talk about literacy, we talk about reading, we talk about ninth graders that can't read, and there's a possibility, if the committee works just right, a kid can be promoted from third to fourth without passing reading, can be promoted from fourth to fifth without passing reading, can be, keep promoted without passing reading. And we can ask ourselves, why they can't read? That don't make sense to me. We should, we should, if a teacher and principal or counselor or whatever should make that decision based on what they've done all year, and not include everybody else on the community. That, that, that's just mind-boggling to me that we can promote these kids without passing reading or math.
I think that's why you see a lot of change with literacy, starting in kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third grade from the state to require districts to focus on it.
These changes here that they make, you know, are just, it's counterproductive to me. It is, it is, it is hard for me, as an educator, to understand that we have to be so flexible that we end up not teaching the kids what they should do. And if they fail two subjects, they still go through the committee?
The committee reviews the majority of the time if they fail two major subjects.
But, but I mean, it's not cut and dry, it still goes to a committee.
Now, I will say this, if, if, before a final decision made.
What?
Usually, when they are recommended, it's a promotion or a retention. Usually, district staff, I just get the SBLC, and some of those are reviewed to make sure that everything's in place that they should have sent it forward to them to intervene more.
But the staff is not going to override a SBL. No, you know that.
Yes, okay.
No. Okay, I, I.
Now, I will say this, Mr. Seymour, next school year, the Louisiana Department of Education has put in a bid that if a student cannot meet the benchmarks at third grade, they shall be retained.
Sure.
We are waiting for what that language is going to look like for the 24-25 pupil progression. We do not have that language as of yet. So that's why you will see those inserts that we are trying to prepare school staff to look at the literacy screener assessments and really assess and look at what that data says before they do make a promotion. If we truly have a student that cannot read, we need to intervene earlier rather than later. So there are some changes coming in 24-25. But the language is actually there not to be more flexible, to actually to start having our staff and our school look at what those literacy screener assessments are actually indicating that students are having trouble with so that we can intervene a lot earlier and not have to get to the point that a kid's in third grade and they cannot read and we just have to retain. have to retain. So that data is not there to be more flexible necessarily, it's just having them have another piece of data to start looking at and to consider when they retain or-
There may be changes, but it's not going to be concrete.
Right.
And to find out their reading, if they have a reading difficulty themselves, won't the PLE do that?
Yes, we get to do it. Well, it teaches our teachers how to better recognize when those students are having trouble and what's the appropriate strategy and intervention to give them. So that we're not just band-aiding that they can't read, but it's actually tooling down and pointing what skill about reading does that child not have, so that we can give them the appropriate intervention piece to help them become a better student. That's why we make them into a PLE letter training. And I would say many of the schools that have embraced it and putting those skills in place after their first year of training, they have seen significant improvement in how, how their teachers are approaching that in this county.
Monitoring there, about being well with the principal and the high going through all, the seventh grade, the eighth grade. And it's just mind-boggling, everything is very difficult to do with teachers. Without taking the teacher's recommendation at the beginning of the year, after doing all this, all this monitoring, all this evaluation, and the teacher said, you're not ready to do that.
Okay.
How many of us pay you? Not to listen to the teacher.
Okay. Ms. David, did you have a comment that you wanted to make?
Yes. Earlier in the pupil progressive plan, just two years ago, grades four through 12, if you failed two subjects, then that was just automatically retained. There was no SBLC meeting. That was just automatically retained, two major subjects in grades four through 12.
Any other further discussion or questions?
Help Mr. Seymour not.
Any questions or comments from the audience? So we'll call a vote. All in favor to approve the 2023-2024 Pupil Progression Plan, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, please say nay. Motion carries. Item 2.8, discussion and/or consideration regarding distribution of the 2023-2024 Legislative Stipend. It's an action item, so a motion by Mr. Rishard and a second by Mr. Higginbottom. Yeah, well-
Discussion.
The discussion-
Consider discussion.
To consider regarding the distribution of the 2023-2024 Legislative Stipend.
So, madam president, members of the board, as you all are aware, the legislature approved a one-time stipend or a one-time allocation of $2,000 for certificated staff and $1,000 for non-certificated staff. The board has wide discretion in how it chooses to distribute those funds. The dollars were received by all local school systems at the end of August. We've actually received the money, as I understand things, in our bank account. Tonight's item is to consider and hopefully make some decisions on how and when to distribute. I've sent several FAQs from the Department of Education. In the handout that you just, that we just passed out, this is from our salary book. You can see that we distribute one-time salary supplements in January, June, November and December. Again, the board has a wide range of authority, whether or not to divide it up in December or do a fall distribution and a spring distribution and divide it in half or distribute it all at one time. All we need is direction from the board as to when and how, so we can prepare our finance, our finance staff to distribute the funds.
Ms. Abir, you have a comment?
Justin, can we do this in October? If you had the board's discretion, talking about the district, it's all the map. The new districts are doing-
Your people would better do it in October, it'd be no problem.
We can do it at any time, just one thing.
One time?
Always have to be involved, the day of the stipend. And once the stipend is distributed, we need to put hard on after that date. And I would see it in place.
Mm-hmm.
One thing for the board.
Say we give it in October.
Say that, that's true.
The whole thing?
I agree with you. One lump sum.
More motions?
Teachers invest so much and open it up to schools.
Yeah.
They can use it right now.
Or add a bond. Let's give it to them soon.
And I had, I had members from teachers organizations from our district call me, and I had several other employees reach out and talk to me. They want their money.
Yeah.
And, and the times are hard and they want their money.
Yeah, they want it.
Mm-hmm.
Do we need a motion?
We do need a motion.
If the decision is to distribute in October, we traditionally distribute around the 10th of the month. I think our finance staff can handle that. There are some other notes that I'd like for the board to be fully aware of, that the general fund will have to cover some costs associated with the stipend, simply because the legislature did not include some classes of, or groups of employees. But traditionally, when the state fails to include everyone, for the last several years, I think the board has picked up the tab to cover the costs for all employees. So I'm assuming that's, that's the discussion tonight as well.
Do you have that, Justin? If you want to do the payroll, since we already do, like we do our substitute payrolls on the 10th, it would be official for the county staff. Planning on doing it in October, put it at October 10th.
Okay.
Just maybe more streamlined.
So the-
$180,000, whatever, we good, we good. It will increase the effort, but out of fairness-
Yeah.
I don't think we would be prepared to, you know, exclude the-
I'm telling you, I think October, I like it. We absorbing and we absorbing. I'd like to make a motion that we distribute one-time stipend to all the people in the staff and also get approximately $180,000 from the general fund for the October 10th payroll.
Mr. Abir, I need you to add and include that in the salary book, because according to-
Yes.
The mandate, the salary book has to be updated, so if you don't mind adding-
And also include it in the salary book.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded by Mr. Abir and Mr. Seymour to pay out the one-time stipend that was awarded by the state for degreed and non-degreed staff on October the 10th and that it would be recorded in our salary book. Is there any further questions or comments? Oh, I need, I need a motion. Y'all made the motion, I'm sorry. Okay. Okay, and it's been moved and seconded. Okay, so is there any other questions or comments? Any questions or comments from the audience? Okay. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, please say nay. Motion carries.
And, madam president, thank y'all for making that decision tonight. We'll get to working on, on the distribution and we'll make sure that all employees understand the requirements of the being employed for 60 days prior to and that kind of thing. And if anybody giving it out in October would preclude anyone from receiving it if they're not employed after October 10th.
Okay.
Just want to make that clear. Thank you.
Yes. Okay, moving on to item 2.9, discussion and/or consideration regarding amendment to DS contract for 2023-2024.
Madam president, if I may, before we get too far into this discussion, hate to do deja vu all over again, but I would ask that the board just delay taking any action on the contract tonight. In the memo passed around to you all from Mr. Geis, legal counsel, there's some more clarification that's still required on the actual savings. We would continue to pay DS bus at last year's rates until we can get some clarity on, more specifics on the savings component, since we're going to the four day, we're at the four-day work week and the employee incentive program, similar to what we discussed last time. And I don't intend to bring any, any additional contract amendments to the board for consideration until we get more specificity on some of those items. And I think at this point, it needs to be hashed out between our attorneys. And I think Mr. Geis is on the line tonight.
Yes.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Higginbottom and seconded by Mr. Quibido to table this discussion and consideration regarding the amendment to DS bus contract for 2023-24. Any discussion about that motion? Any questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, say nay. Motion carries. Okay, item 2.0, oh, 2.10, discussion and/or consideration regarding conducting a future school board workshop. So this was, do you need me to, are you going to explain? Okay, so this item was requested by some of the board members that we have a board workshop to discuss some of the concerns that are being presented to board members about issues with the four-day instructional week and a lot of other components where we could have an open conversation, oops, open conversation with the superintendent, district leaders from central office and board members be able to share and we, and you, we would all be able to hear what the discussion is. So anybody have any questions or comments about that?
I think that's, I think that's a good, that became, that's itself. You know, it goes on the classroom, like it goes on the schools, best schools, county schools, all that stuff. And I think that's been obviously discussed. You know, we, we talk about the budget at a meeting, and, and right as so, we have to. But we probably have the best financial officer anywhere around, so he has the budget. And we get monthly reports by DS, monthly, we talk about, that's all, we get monthly reports about different things. But we don't get any monthly report about what-
Mm.
And I'd like to, I'd like to get some information. Sit down and talk and see what we can come up with, a plan that we can address this and have people presenting things at a meeting every so often, what's going on in their school, how they monitor, that's to keep abreast of this four-day week. If their four-day week's going to be successful, be committed, though, a lot of people have to rise. And I think that's a good start.
Okay. Any other comments?
We could be in that trend like during the school day or weekend.
Well, we can discuss when that could take place after we decide that that's something that we want to do. But I think we need-
Talking about bringing in staff, but-
Talking about us being there with the superintendent and our, our lead people here from the central office.
You got to think about, if we're going to do it on a Saturday, we asking these people to come eat here, don't try to stop them or-
Um, I think-
Coming on the Saturday, coming like a five to seven?
I think we could do it in, like an evening thing, like, like we would have a meeting. It could be, yeah, and we could have it in a more relaxed atmosphere like APEC building. But I think we need to talk about the why and the need. Mr. Quibido, you have a comment you'd like to make?
Are you requesting like a retreat, like St. Landry Parish? How do you, or it's just in-house type stuff?
This is to discuss some specific concerns. And, and I think what, what was presented to me by members of the board is that there was a desire for us to speak to each other about what people are telling us and what we're hearing and seeing, so that we're aware and that we can share this with the leadership for our district. And we can ask those questions as a group, so it's not a hearsay, you know, everybody's there and we get a clear understanding. Because some of the questions that are being, or concerns that are being presented to different people, they're happening to every, you know, might be happening to other people too as well. So they would get those questions answered. It would be a way for us to, to really get a clear picture of what's going on.
No, I understand that. St. Landry had theirs on a Saturday and, and they had the school board members and, and the office staff show up and they, they went six hours. I left after six hours.
Definitely, I'm like, well, in two hours, I think if you pick up the phone and call the supervisor, they can answer any question that they have. In any two-hour discussion that we- That's my-
Well, that discussion, that discussion by St. Landry Parish School Board was very, very productive. There were a lot of people that agreed and disagreed on things that got at least to hear it. And I, I had, I heard no dissension. In fact, when I left there after six hours and they were staying there, they were still discussing school matters. I was the only outsider there. And I think any kind of meeting that you can have like that would be productive to this board, productive to this parish.
I agree. Anything that we could do as a board to improve dedication about children?
Absolutely.
Understand what's going on in classrooms. We hope we're going to do that.
Ms. Abir?
I agree with both sides. I don't, I'm not just, I'm not against a school board retreat or whatever we want to call it, but I have to agree with the other side of the room. Like I said, we got a lot of resources that we do not use. I can get on the phone and call my schools at any time to see what's going on. I can talk to principals at any time. I visit my schools quite often to see what's going on. I can call Mr. Rishard if I need him and ask any question that I need. I can call any of my principals. I can call Ms. Cal. I've called Justin multiple times. I mean, we have a lot of resources here that we can use. Now, do everybody need to be involved with some of those conversations? Possibly so. But we have some great resources here that we can use. And I think we need to make sure that we're using those before we, you know, go say that we need to talk about it among each other. I'm not against a retreat, whatever y'all decide is fine.
And I understand the want and to of the school, the district, who we have to be careful of as well is Act One, which does not allow a school board member to get involved in these day-to-day operations.
Correct.
Now, I mean, we, we here for following the procedures. Why we are, Ms. Cal, why we are, Ms. Higginbottom, Mr., Mr. Sam, the back-
Adam.
We hire these people to what Dilo just said, for these jobs. If you got a question to me, Mr. Output or Input and I O, these people have the phone and these cats are going to be answering the question. We have to be careful, like I said, again, Act One does not allow us to get into those day-to-day operations. And we have some people that are getting into these things a little too deep. And I'm afraid it's going to come, if something's going to happen about it.
I think that, yeah.
Mr. Rishard is there to answer any questions? How people, this is why we are, the questions they, they want to be asked, they want to, they want to be involved. But again, if you're going to ask these people that have come on a Saturday for six to eight hours, we got to look at something to kind of get them to stop, to stop, to change this aspect to come on their day off. Already, we have with the four-day work week, these cats are, I know for a fact, these cats are working way more than the four-day work week. They work in seven days a week, I know for a fact, because I have one of them that is at my house and, and that works all the time, all, all, every day, all day.
I think this-
I think if you pick the phone up and you have those various questions to begin with, I'm going into those schools and harassing the principals, because I've been getting some feedback by some, some of our people just going in there and intimidating our people. That's not what a school board member, we are here to do.
Oh.
Not into everyday thingling of the students, the teachers, the administrators. Our people are getting frustrated, that they're getting intimidated by certain people who really don't mean a whole hell of a bunch- really don't mean a whole hell of a bunch, for going over there telling or saying this and that. But we have people to do those jobs. That's not our job.
I, I think, I know for, one of the things that we experienced this summer when we went to Southern Regional Conference was that we, some of us opened our eyes and wanted to be focused on student performance outcomes. And with us moving in this four day instructional week, there are concerns that people have shared, either with a parent or a teacher or an administrator about managing certain things, or people just have questions. And I think it's a good way for us to have dialogue as a working board, to work together, to have clear understanding, so that whatever, I mean, you know, I get phone calls from people that ask for something and they say, well, somebody told me to call you. And I said, well, I, you know, I'm, I'm glad to help, but this is how I can help. You need to call the school and make an appointment with this person or that person. I can't tell you, it might be something about a discipline issue, it could be something about promotion or whatever, but I think there are other concerns that as a board, what some people are hearing and what has came to me is that we're looking for consistency and people, everybody have a clear understanding of the same thing, having the same language said at the same time of what's happening.
So do we have to follow the size of this meeting?
Yes.
We can have 200. We can call 200.
Well-
You know, if we have 200 in that-
I think so.
200 people coming to our meeting to talk about the education of children, it depends. Oh, I think that's a great thing. And as far as Act One, we not touching Act One.
This has nothing, yeah, this has nothing to do with-
We're not getting anything. We trying to get an understanding, what's going on in our schools, how we, we can better improve it, how we stay informed, to educate, to move our parish forward. If we standing still, we backing up.
Mm-hmm.
We man the school board member to represent the schools of Acadia Parish. And we should, we should want to do that and find out what's going on, how can we make some recommendations that's going to, that's going to improve it. I, I, I'm not sure why we, we bucking this thing if, if we want to, we want to improve our art system. I think we bucking it, I think we might be bucking it for the wrong, uh, right reasons. It's not a matter of bucking it. Well, if it's improving, if it improves, it's one thing, but how would that improve? It improves, it needs to turn the class, not from us. We can't-
Madam President.
How are your schools?
Okay, I'd like to recognize Mr. Quibito, please.
I'd just like to know how Mr. Reshard feels on that subject.
Mr. Quibito and members of the board, it is certainly the prerogative of the board to schedule a retreat. It is certainly the prerogative of the board to schedule a board workshop. I think as long as we follow the correct open meetings law and it's publicized and the public is made aware of an open meeting, that will be available to discuss concerns or issues or progress or lack thereof, all I would ask is for some specificity and that it doesn't become a turkey shoot and that it's solely intended to, to, to focus on improvement and it's not a stump the superintendent or stump the supervisor type setting that we've seen in the past. And I don't know how else to answer that question other than to just lay it on the table. Your policies are very clear and succinct. They call for the roles and responsibilities of school board members. You adopted a code of conduct year after year after year that outlines clearly what everybody's duties and responsibilities are. I would hope that any one of you that has any concern or any member of the public that has any issue knows that the superintendent's office is open and our staff members' offices are open. Again, I welcome the dialogue. All I ask for is good intentions and specificity so we can be prepared to address the concerns that are out there. And I would hope that parents and citizens are bringing concerns to the school level and working through the process, or they're welcome to come straight here. Again, that's why we are here. So it's totally up to, it's whatever the board chooses to do. We're here to answer questions, we're here to explain, we're here to review things. For example, tonight, we, we approved the pupil progression plan. That pretty much outlines everything from sunup to sundown when it comes to education, remediation, promotion, retention. And we have to trust our people at the school level. We have to trust our administrators at the school level. We have to trust our teachers in the classroom. And I think we do that here at the office. And I would hope that we all do that as a community. But on the other hand, if we need to have a retreat or a workshop to get more clarity and provide more explanation, we can certainly do it. If we need to have more one-on-one meetings or small group meetings to clarify issues and gauge what's successful and what's not successful and get checkpoints on how we're proceeding with the four day work week, can do that anytime, individually or collectively. So I appreciate you asking, Mr. Quibito. We're, we're, we're here. We're here to serve.
Well, I'm, I'm new on the board, and so I may say some things that you may think, oh, he doesn't know what he's talking about, and you're probably right in some of those things. But you know what? The majority of the public doesn't know either. And that, so I'm asking questions that the regular layman are going to ask. And one of the things is, well, why, if somebody wants to get together and talk, why can't you get together and talk? And maybe you can work out some problems that you have. And that's what I saw at the St. Landry Parish. I saw some, I saw some people there that flat didn't like each other, but that meeting seemed to bring them together. And I think that was probably one of the most productive meetings I've been to in a long, long time. And, and I've been in business a long time. And it was, so sometimes it's good to get personalities together and talk about things. And again, I'm just, I'm just, the new guy on the block. So I said I was just going to sit back tonight, listen and learn, but as you're going to find out, I can't just sit back and listen. Sometimes, sometimes I'll have to say things. But that, as far as getting together, I, I don't see any reason why somebody up a board or whatever wouldn't want to get together and discuss things that need to be discussed. You know, if you want to do it in small groups or large groups, but one large group meeting can't hurt, at least, I, I don't see how it could. That's just my opinion.
Any other discussion? Anybody else have comments? Well, I mean, you can make, we can make a motion to do this and we can call for a vote. To have a workshop. Okay.
Yeah, I'll second her.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Seymour and seconded by Mr. Quibito. Any other further discussion or questions? Questions or comments from the audience? All in favor of conducting a school board workshop to discuss concerns, please say aye.
Aye.
Well, we can do roll call. I'm sorry.
Senator Nathan? Lynn Quibito?
Yes.
Bill Abear?
Yes.
David Agnes?
Yes.
Yes.
Mike Thorpe? Tom?
No.
Yes. Six days, two minutes, motion.
Okay, so we will collectively, we will, we'll get with this, I'll get with the superintendent and ask Ms. David to sit in on that. And we will look at some options of what we can do that would be workable and feasible for staff and for the board. Okay? And hopefully we can do that soon. Okay? Moving on to routine items, 3.1, Consider the Recommendations of Personnel, Insurance, and Curriculum Committee Regarding Changes to the Following Policies Due to 2023 Legislative Action. And it's BCAD teleconference, remote participation in school board meetings, BCB1, I mean, I, public participation in school board meetings, EBBB, school and student safety, JB attendance, JBD, student absences and excuses, JDA, corporal punishment, JC, JGCD, administration of medication, IDCJ, continuous learning, EDCB, carpool and bus line safety. So we need a motion.
On a motion by Jane Higginbottom and seconded by I. Reshard, send these policies to the full board for approval.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Abear and seconded by Ms. David. Any questions or comments? Any questions or comments from the audience? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, please say nay. Motion carries. Move on to item 3.2, Receive an Update on Student Attendance and Truancy.
There's some information regarding truancy.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Before, to discuss truancy and absenteeism, some of the information you have before you is a duplicate. Just want to let you know some of the things we've done in the month of August. At the principal's meeting, all this information was discussed with the principals regarding how to go about the truancy and logging the new initiatives we have logged. All the principals informed August 1st. Counselors met August 3rd. Same information was given to them. And I've visited all the schools from August 23rd to the 31st with the guidance, counselors, clerk, attendance clerks, and principals present. Also, on September 6th, as a proclamation for Attendance Awareness Month, we had school officials, superintendents, mayor, police chief, sheriff, students from Crowell High and one from Midland High School for the proclamation. And this is continued, Attendance Awareness Month, that's what the proclamation read. Also, we have several attendance workshops at various schools in the parish. We will have one of the judges present, Judge Melissa Trahan, and we'll also have the judge from Rain present and doing the visits and we talking about truancy in the schools. I think first, we'd like to kind of define attendance and truancy. Attendance, basically, is following the guidelines which you have in your packet. Days of attendance allowable are 13 days you can miss. After three days, note goes home to the parents generated throughout web system. Day five, a letter is going to the parents. The schools are mandated to meet with the parents at the school and discuss the reasons why the kid is missing, what can we do to help them to improve their attendance. And if they don't do that, then on the 13 absences, they are referred to FANS. And if, after that point, they're meeting with me at the school board. This is a new procedure that we follow and hopefully that would help to decrease the truancy rate in the parish. Truancy, absenteeism is a little different. Just doing a little research, absenteeism rate, gold standard is 95. That's perfect, being perfect. Acadia Parish has been consistently in the 90s, a low of 91, a 90, 95. It's been consistent throughout the last five years for its attendance. However, we experience some issues with truancy. State average is 42% truancy. It's a, it's a national problem. And Acadia is 56%. If you look also, I think it's the last colored sheet you have, this is a report of the daily attendance in Acadia Parish. You can see it was taken by Mr. Kuti, that was done on a weekly basis. And of course, at the beginning, we would love to maintain this stat, 97% the first week, second week, 95, 96, third week, 95. And total from August 14th through 8/31 would be 96%. However, the percentages you're looking at, the last one will be higher due to the fact that we have no-show students that have not been accounted for. They are being counted absent at this time. So I would expect the percentage rate to be higher than 96.61. Deadline for purging the records of students that do not show up will be on the 28th of this month. And during the October 1st report, we'll have a good read on the actual truancy, attendance rate at that particular time. And if you look in your packet, I'm not going to go over all of that for you, not unless you ask any questions regarding that. Attendance, absences, and truancy, that just gives us a guideline of how we going to approach truancy and working with the courts to make sure that more action is taken once a student reaches that level and they could be adjudicated by the system, they could be fined, and they could be put in jail if that goes to that point. The first thing you see here after the, it's a five-tier process. After they go through the four tiers, first letter, you see a letter that the school writes to the parents. They come to the school, they meet with the parents, and they sign a contract. And we explain to them that they have to follow the truancy laws and what can we do to help them improve their attendance in coming to school. In the interim, we wait, see if the kids continue to come or if they continue to miss. Once they get 13 days, they're reported to FANS. I receive a letter from the school. I'll set up a meeting with the parents. They have to come to the school board, we'll have a discussion regarding the truancy laws and let them know that they have been reported to FANS. Possibly, they could be called to court to explain why their students are absent. And that's basically the process we follow. There are different types of absences. Also, if you look at the different reporting periods, kids who missed 18 or more days of school in the 21, 21, 22 school year. And basically, chronic absenteeism is considered, students that missed 18 or more days. So these kids fall under that category. The counselors meet with them periodically, at least five times during the school year, and to assess their absenteeism rate and make sure they improve it. And we finding that it does work. I know Ms. Davie was a counselor, and we employ that same process. I think if you talk to the kids and talk to the parents and let them know that you're actually watching what they're doing, chances are their attendance is going to improve. And that's basically what we are currently doing with truancy. This is just a small snapshot of what actually happens. You also have a handbook, Child Welfare and Attendance. Look at page 8, 9, and 10, that's the same information that you received on the four tiers of truancy. Yes, sir?
I have a question. So I'm looking at tier, tier four, it says 13 unchewed, that, that 14 days unchewed, credit to denial to that student. So that school, that student will fail that year, correct?
It's suggested that they could, but it has to be appealed. It comes before committee to determine if they're going to pass it.
Do they have a chance to appeal after?
That's correct.
And if they miss 18 days or more, or they, do they get expelled or they can still-
No, they can still return to school. They just counted as being chronically absent.
So the norms that were set for the, you said the 20 days was chronic?
Well, 18 days-
18 days was chronic. So is that based on schools that are attending five days a week all year? Or is this, that-
Or is this, that, is that, do we have a factor figured in because we're a four-day instructional week? Because they're already missing a day because of a non-instructional day. So, to me, that number should be less for us, for kids missing, because if they miss, you know, we shouldn't give them that large of a range because they're missing that, they're already missing a day.
Well, you require more minutes according to the Bulletin 741. The minutes that you attend school, even if you have a four-day week, you're still having the same basic amount of minutes in the five-day week, in the four-day week. They're the same.
I understand that, but if they're missing a day during that week, they're missing, you know, they're, they're, they're attending less days, but they're getting the same minutes.
Right. Well, 10% of the school day, if it's 180 days, that's 18 days. If it's 149 days like we have, it's 14.9.
Okay. I don't, I don't, what's that? Okay, I just still, I just still think it.
Is that, is that, these numbers set by legislative, Scott, or is that, they're set by Bessie Bulletin?
Bessie has rules and regulations along with legislation from the state that defines what truant is, what chronic absenteeism is, what specific attendance rate should be. That's all set by the state. And it's all tied to instructional minutes, which is the 67,320 minutes, the minimum amount of minutes kids are required to attend. Then, it's, and I don't mean to belabor the point, but it's not as easy as it sounds. It's not as straightforward as it sounds, simply because there's a number of reasons students can be absent. If anything, the legislature widened the scope of what an excused absence is this past session by allowing for mental health-related issues to be deemed excused absences. So, all those things are looked at on a case-by-case basis with each student, each counselor, each administrator at each school. We also have staff that are going in and out of the communities, especially with our younger kids, our homeschool liaison staff, along with our, Ms. Pete's office, work diligently to go into schools and go into homes to try to get kids into school on a regular daily basis. And I understand, Ms. President Atkinson, your point about the four-day work week conversion and the five-day work week conversion. It's the minute equivalent has been added into the school day by adding the 54 minutes per school day.
They're putting in the days, but they're putting in the minutes in four days, but if they miss a, you know, one of those days out of the four, you know.
When you miss a day, it's like a 1.4 day.
Right.
1.3 day.
Yeah.
And you only have 149 days a school versus 178 in the past. That's the difference.
I don't know. I just, I just know that there's been a lot of concern about student attendance in our district that, you know, we need to make sure that people understand, we need to get them, they need to be at school so that we can take care of what they need to learn. Okay?
Are we doing anything at the, at the level for the schools that are below 95% consistently?
Well, just constantly watching the attendance rates, talking to the schools administrators.
Can we do something extra?
Well, we should be doing something, but everybody's in the 90% range right now. But it can improve. It can improve.
Well, they're in the 90s.
Yeah, we have summed up to 95.
98s, 99s.
No, nobody, I can't call anybody to state at 98 right now, but 95 is the gold standard throughout the state of Louisiana.
Point that we, we gave you some statistics right here that says two of them, possibly three, are consistently below 95. So, are we doing anything more for those schools to get those people in school, to increase them so that they can be there to learn more?
Right. Well, we make attendance awareness month. The schools are checking kids who miss the three days and making calls home.
Mr. Duracell, if I may interrupt, I think Steve is focused on the kids, it's on a kid-by-kid basis. And those kids that have chronic absences, there's some extra steps that we put into the policies this year where Mr. Duracell is going to try to work with the parents to get them in here, into the office, which is a significant step. And it's going to be student by student, but as far as a school-wide focus on schools that are dipping, obviously, the HSL staff are working along with Ms. Pete's office and Mr. Duracell to monitor those rates. And maybe I'm not answering your question either. Paul can expound on that.
Well, I don't, I don't know the answer to the question. That's why, I don't know if you, what you tell me is what I want to hear. What I'm stating is, just like we do when our scores are bad in a certain school, we did tag team to get in those schools, right?
Yes, sir.
And you told me you were doing that.
Yes.
So, what difference is there when it comes to absenteeism?
I think the focus is on the individual student and getting the students connected to our office and the school. And then, law enforcement is assisting in some areas. And then, once the student is deemed to be chronically absent, it moves into an additional meeting here along with the court system for those students that are chronically absent. Steve, I don't have a silver bullet answer for you on the entire getting kids to school. I wish we could go and get some and bring them to school, but we're not at that point yet. But there is some targeted intervention, and it drills down to the actual school itself. And I think you can tie school performance scores to attendance. It's all part of the process, of the school improvement process.
If we're going to tag team for that, we should be tag teaming for this.
It's, I guess I'm, I'm of the understanding that it's all part of the school improvement process. That's a given. It's already part of, you got to have kids at school to teach them.
Do we still have?
Next, I'm next to support.
Well, we, yeah, we hope so. We were hoping for that. But I'm just saying, the correlation between low-performance schools and attendance is not that great a difference. If you're in the 90s, I mean, some of our top schools are 91, 92, and some of the low-performance schools are 93. So, but we trying to keep them in the 90s. That's our point. And that's why we've implemented these changes. Hopefully, we can get them more, come to school more often, and I'd love to see everybody 95%.
Do we still have the PBIS program?
What now?
Excuse me. Do we still have the PBIS programs in the schools?
Yes, it's still in effect.
Functioning?
Yeah, I would imagine it's functioning. It is.
They just had a PBIS function at the elementary the other day, last week.
Do you still have it through the offices?
No, sir, we do not.
Let me look at. Mr. Seymour?
Seven, another seven, four numbers up here. I didn't know that. We have a new phone system.
J call?
Call parents, what's the name of it?
I think it's J call.
J campus is part of our student information system, and we've always had, we've had remind for several years, which is a text messaging system to parents that.
But I'm hearing that.
The robo-call. They call.
For every single absence that, that, I mean, yeah, y'all, I didn't know that.
It's an automated system, Milton, that once attendance is entered on the daily attendance roll in the morning, there's, it automates a call, a robo-call.
Who does that?
The attendance clerks at each school. You know, we have folks that work in attendance, secretaries and attendance clerks at our schools.
Individual school triggers the call?
Yes, sir. Once they enter the student absentee, when they take roll in the morning at school, once they enter that, who's there, who's not there, there's an automatic call that can be generated.
I'm hearing that schools can see if they, if the parents or whoever picked up, and that's what we call it.
I don't know the details into, into that.
It'll actually log if a parent answered the phone call. It'll move to the next number and go to the tier. If the primary didn't answer, it'll move to secondary number. It will also, it has the ability to also prefer, like the text message, and it logs all of that every, every time it tries to make a contact. It'll notify that someone answered, did not answer, like it does, it does, it's a running log. So, when you go into that student's attendance tracker, and it logs every attempt that has been made, how many times, was there a response, it does all of that just automatically. So, the schools are not having to necessarily input that data, the system does it itself.
Do, do we have a plan of action to respond to all those people that have no response?
The schools are, the schools aren't even trying to that. The schools people trying to that. Then, as we're monitoring up here, if our chronic students, if there's, we'll be using that as part of when he has meetings with parents, he can have that log with them, with him to indicate, look, you've made this many attempts, you have a bad phone number, whatever that might be, he can address that and the meetings that he has when they start coming up here on that 13th access.
We know that parents will get three numbers, and if you call all three, nobody's answering.
And they change their numbers.
And tomorrow, they have to be different.
You have to go to the P on.
And you answer, and nobody answers those three, and then the kid's still stuck at school at 6 o'clock at night.
Still somebody's.
Believe me, I know.
You have a fraud investigation?
Oh, yeah.
That you prefer to report as well.
I'm not, not the best one.
Armstrong, that Armstrong. Look at Armstrong.
Ms. Seymour, you had something else you wanted to say?
Maybe that's another reason when you ask about the.
In middle.
A good part of the truancy. And when we had that.
Yeah, we had that.
And they would go to the house, and they would go to the homes. And I think that would be a good.
There was a special funding source that, through federal grants, that allowed for the truant officer through triad, if I'm not mistaken. I can't remember the exact credentials, but.
What, in the past, we had task.
Task, and it was managed with the court system and.
District attorney's office funded it.
It scared them enough to make them bring their trunants. It scared them enough to make them, because I'm going to tell you, I've been working at Armstrong for eight years. Before, it wasn't, it wouldn't get too bad, but after truancy fell off, nothing had any teeth. The parents were just like, oh, whatever, they got to send these, because we would send our stuff out to this, to Duracell. You have three, five, 13, and 15 letters. We, you do all the steps. They don't care because they not being held accountable by the judicial system. At that point, then they're like, oh, well, I think my kids.
That's why we, that's why we wear the orange.
Exactly.
I think, I think we should look into Ohio when we need to try to get a positive view of truancy. Whoever we need to, the avenue we need to go to to get, be a good ones.
Oh, can you expound on the HSL staff and what their function is?
Well, HSL is primarily helping in getting parents' involvement, basically, with school. It does involve coming to school, but it's mostly on academic side, why they're not performing well. They provide them with assistance, different ages, to help them. That's their primary for.
Talking about our staff members that work with Ms. Pete, the homeschool liaisons that actually go into the schools and work attendance?
Well, some of them are working attendance, yes, some of them are, and they're working with the parents, making it's parent involvement. That's their main function.
And that's good, that's all, until you both have parents. Well, and don't forget, I mean, at the very end of the, at the end of the term, two year last year, we were able to bring some cases to court system, and they were held accountable. So, we're starting a new school year. We do have certain students who we know ended the school year with high accesses that we are monitoring in order to bring back to the court system with all the documentation as they, as those accesses increase. They kind of set a parameter for us of when they're ready to cure those cases. So, like, kind of a defined number of accesses in which they feel that they can actually intervene and start intervening with the parents. So, I mean, we do still have that going with our students that are in the elementary grades. And they did indicate that if they had family members that were sixth grade and above that were also chronically absent, that we could also bring the entire family to, to that court date and address the accesses with the family there. So, we do have that, that we'll still work on.
Or we seeing pretty much the same students, like, kind of like a repeat customer type deal?
Carol, I understand what you're saying, and that's a good thing with the court, but I would like for us to do something prior to the court. Don't use the court as a threat. Let's implement something that we can take action on, 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 and excuse us. And if they told it, don't respond to us, then I think we could, I think. I need to dump anything else on you.
That's fine. Not a problem.
Would you have a problem with checking the area parishes and see how they come about getting a truant officer?
Well, in my capacity, I'm president of the Louisiana Association of Child Welfare and Attendance personnel, and we meet regularly, and I can tell you how many do and how many don't. I give that information for you.
Does Lafayette, Remington, Bagdad, truant office?
Yes, sir.
Why don't we have one of them? I mean, it's the same judicial, in district, why they have one if we don't?
Funding sources may be different. Somebody else may be funding the truancy program. I don't know where the money is coming from.
Private donor type?
No, I think school districts probably. I can find out, neighboring.
Call it on you, Mrs. D, I know you're busy.
Oh, no, I can find neighboring, what you want, within the 50-mile radius, or what do you want?
Let's see, ask who's comparable to the size of our district. You know?
Fine, okay.
Just to give us an idea of what we're looking at.
Okay, sure.
The other thing, all, all these letters you.
That's what now?
I'll be a while. Is this parish generated or individual schools?
That's, comes through my office.
And the name from yours?
Yeah.
The attendance percent. Can you explain in simple terms that I will understand the difference in attendance percentage and truancy?
Well, attendance is actually present at the school. They're coming, and it compiles the number. If you have 100 kids at, at Evangelum, okay, five are absent, you have a 95% attendance rate. Okay? If 10 absent, 90% attendance rate. And the larger schools, you'll have more kids attending, so consequently, you're going to have more kids absent in a day. But it's based on percentages.
Because I was, I was hearing there, and I listened, and I, Saint Andrew is addressing the truancy percentage. What is that, what, what is that?
I think, if I may, not to jump in, Paul, but I think what you're referring to, Milton, if I may, I think the parish president there, parish government, has partnered with the school board there to allow some of their post-certified officers to go into the rural areas and visit with families to try to get kids in school and see why kids are not coming to school. That's my understanding of the partnership that's going on in, in Saint Landry Parish. It's with parish government and the school system. Yes, sir. And Saint Landry got a direct legislative allocation through their legislators for a truancy official to work at the DA's office and with the school board there to fund that position. I don't know if it was renewed or not. I mean, we can.
Yeah, shot, it may be renewed, I'm not sure.
Mr. Richard, you said at one time it was funded with grant money. Do we know for a fact that that grant is dead and over with, or that?
I think there's other opportunities as, as.
We have some opportunities.
From the federal government, yes, sir, that we can seek out. But it would require a partnership with the court system and law enforcement, as I understand things. We all have to be at the same place. So we all have to be at the same place.
Can you add my question?
The state, the state truancy is 42%. Acadia is 56% truancy. Yes. State is 42%.
That's cool.
It's all over the country, it's high everywhere.
And we like, we really are.
Well, thank you for having me.
Thank you, it was a good discussion. And I think this is more things that we could talk about.
Hey, no more, no more.
Well, we can hold that for the workshop, you could do that at the workshop.
I'm sorry, my door is open anytime.
Okay, item 3.3. The board may enter into executive session pursuant to L.A. RNS 4217 to discuss security personnel plans and procedures as well as the implementation of such plans or procedures. So. Do we, we need a motion if we want to go into executive session? It's been moved by Mr. Abraham, seconded by Mr. Higginbottom, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Do you all have a motion for us to come back into session, please? Been moved by Mr. Higginsbottom and seconded by Mr. Abir to come back into session. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on. 4.1, receive assignments and changes of personnel. Okay.
Before we adjourn, I just want to ask in relation to the item where we voted to do the workshop, if anybody has specific, like Mr. Richard had requested that we have some direction on topics that need to be discussed. So if you would email that to me, then when I meet with Mr. Richard and as plan about when we're going to do this, we'll have some things down for them to do that. Okay, meeting adjourned. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, there you go. Meeting adjourned. Let's go.
Have a safe trip home.
I don't know that you're doing okay. You still in social butterfly?